We're up, all right. Okay. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, June 22, 2021. It is 10:01. We're here for the regular session in Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our flags. Everybody will please stand.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to come here and take care of the community business. We ask that the decisions we make may be, follow the path of righteousness. We ask for wisdom. We ask for understanding, patience with each other as we do so. Christ's name, we ask these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and individual.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, this morning, we've got Commissioner Hutchins, Straight, Martin, and Harrison all present. I'm Judge Stovall. I'll be presiding over the meeting. Commissioners, you have the minutes from June 8 regular session. Entertainer motion for approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. At this time, we'll have public testimony. All speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Current concerns will be addressed by county staff and may be placed on future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. I know there are several of you here that have filled out forms to speak about the Hidden Valley Estates. It is action item 13. I'm going to move it up on the agenda once we get through some of this other. If you want to save your comments, we're going to move that item up. And so y'all won't have to sit here through all the other presentations. But if anybody's got a comment not related to Hidden Valley, please come forth. Are there any comments online, Daniel, at this time?
I'm not sure.
Still getting up? Okay, all right. Anybody got any other comments besides on the Hidden Valley? If not, we'll move on to our business, action item one, a presentation of title 4E Legal Data of Hunt County. This was a presentation made last week. We're wanting to entertain a motion to authorize me to sign a contract with the regional company to do the applications for the grants for indigent defense monies. Entertainer motion for approval of that.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Under new business consent calendar, Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. This time, I'm going to move to action item 13, replat of Lot 7, Hidden Valley Estates, Precinct 2. And this time, I'm going to open it up for a public hearing. Any of those that wish to speak about this item will be allowed to. Let's see, we've got Teresa Biggers. Would you like to come forward and speak?
Your honor, there'll be a correction referenced that. It's precinct 3. Correction on the.
Did I say precinct something there? Oh, on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, precinct 3. Okay, gotcha. Okay, Teresa, come forward. You may need to turn that mic down a little bit for us.
Is that okay?
Perfect, thank you.
I wanted to say, as a property owner in Hidden Valley for the last 21 years, and we originally bought out there and have built two homes because we lost one in a fire, and an appraiser here in this county for 22 years. The restrictions on these properties out there greatly give value to our properties, and the negate of those will drastically affect our overall values. And that's a large concern for most of our property owners here in that development. My other concern was that the county did not address letters to everyone within the development when this was brought up. I just found out at 5 o'clock last night that this.
I think we're required 200 feet.
That's correct.
What about everybody in the development? You're not required to notify everybody that this affects?
I'm not. This is the first. I just heard about this last night. I mean, we didn't work on the letters.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But normally, we only have to go 200 feet from the property.
Okay, but it does affect everybody in the.
I understand. The law says 200 feet is the way I understand it. Daniel can double-check that for us.
Okay. And, you know, plus, these are, you know, these are recorded restrictions from when this development originated that specifically states that no originating tract out of that original development can be divided in less than 10 acres. And this is 11-acre tract that they're wanting to divide into two sections.
Okay.
Okay.
I understand. Daniel, we don't have any authority over restrictions. Isn't that a civil matter?
Yes, that's correct. Just so that we're on the same page. I had a Commissioner's two-page summary of the legal here. And basically, the county not only can't say no based on what's in the legal, the restrictions that run with the land, the county is required to approve any plat that meets the subdivision requirements. And so, I understand what you're saying. It definitely will affect property rights, but that's a private civil right of action that you got against someone who is violating. The county can't step into the role of the group that enforces it because it's not a, basically, counties can only do what the state legislature says they can do. And in this case, like many other issues that come before the court, the county's ability to do anything related to this is extremely limited. All these deed restrictions that you're talking about, if they're valid and in place, which I haven't looked at them to see if they are, but the county can't make a decision based on what those say, even if the decision is to do exactly opposite of what those deed restrictions say.
I guess you just have to consider yourself, because initially, the second sentence you said that it's the county's responsibility to follow whatever regulations you said
In the subdivision.
In subdivision, the lower subdivision. And these are separately filed. They're not just in the deed.
Sure. What I'm talking about specifically is that when some tries to amend or to change a plat or to file a plat with implied property, there are separate regulations that the county adopted, I think in 1994 originally, and then completely changed in December of last year. As long as the plat procedures are respected in subdivision regulation, then the state law says that nothing else can impact the county's decision. So what you're talking about is a separate civil right of action that the property owners in that area may have against the person who's seeking to divide. But the county can't base its decision, a yes or no decision, on what private property actions may be in place, whether that's an HOA or, in this case, deed restrictions that run with the land.
It sounds contradictory to me.
I understand. It does sound very contradictory.
You're just saying that.
Are you saying we have to get an lawyer involved?
One's a subdivision regulation that this county adopted under a part of, one part of the code. The law that you're talking about, that I'm saying the county can't do anything about, is a rest of the law that says that they can only do what the state says they can do. And those are two separate things. They come in under the government code, the local government code, the administrative code, and the, one of the other codes, I can't remember off the top of my head right now. But all four of those have to be restricted at the same time. The county's Commissioners' Court ability to do anything is extremely hampered. I mean, this situation comes up very regularly, almost every single week, where it seems like it's logical that the county should do something or the Commissioners' Court should do something, but it's limited, but only being able to do what the law says that they can do. And the county can't legally adopt subdivision regulations that say something along the lines of, there may be no further subdivision, there are private deed restrictions that run with the land. That's not something that the county has the ability to do. And because they don't have the ability to do that, they have to follow the rest of the law says, which is that if it follows the local subdivision regulation requirements and the real estate code requirements, that the county has to grant it. Now, the issue that you brought up about the, that other people in there didn't get it, if people who should have gotten that letter didn't receive it, then that's all going to have to be redone. But it's still going to have the same final result, which is that this county can't stop that. The only people who can stop that are the other property owners who also come under those deed restrictions. And I don't know if that's even possible. I will tell you, the past three times that this has come up in this county, other deed restrictions, all three of those deed restrictions were no longer affected because either they hadn't had the meetings or they hadn't re-upped the association that was supposed to be in control of those. And so I can't tell the people of you that are in here, their property owners that are affected by this, I wouldn't be able to tell you whether or not you have the ability to file a district court lawsuit and injunction to prevent this from happening without determining whether or not the deed restrictions are still currently in place.
What would negate them from being in place? There's no.
There are many different things. And it's usually language that's in the deed restrictions themselves. Usually near the end, it'll say, you know, this is effective for 20 years or the original owners can vote on do this, things like that. Two of the last three were undone because they didn't have the right number of meetings that they were supposed to have in the association that's set up. So there are different things. That's something that the county wouldn't be able to give you advice on. I can't give you advice to represent the county. But that's something that, that's where the answer to that would lie.
To my knowledge, does it not have to be renewed? Most of them, for instance, they.
Some of them are automatically renewed.
Some automatically. Now, they don't have an HOA form. Am I correct?
Yeah, and I haven't reviewed it, but yeah, generally, they either have a time period or they auto-renew or there's a procedure in there to do it based on a vote of the property owners or a percentage of the property owners.
Okay. Rose Dodson?
Thank you, guys, for taking time to give us the opportunity to do this. I've lived, I'm not a part, I don't have property in Hidden Valley, but I've lived on County Road 3116 for over 25 years. My mother-in-law is Joe Dodson. She actually has property adjacent to Lot 7, and she's owned her property for over 50 years. So we've been in the community. We had the privilege of being out there in the countryside well before Hidden Valley was established. So we've enjoyed it, and we were grateful when they did establish Hidden Valley, that they did have certain things in place that made it still peaceful. And, you know, to some people, they, it might seem like a little thing. Oh, you know, this is just 11 acres. All the, all the lots on that same side of the street, there were several that were divided into five-acre plots over there. So why couldn't this one be divided also? But there were reasons in the beginning, when they developed this place, that they did not divide that same, on the same side of the road. Why didn't they go ahead and have it into five-acre plots at that time? So I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the way this is divided, but this piece of property, the five-acre lots that are on this side are very long towards the road, and this one is a little different. It's on an S curve as well. So I do believe that the county would have some say in that this is not a safe place to have two driveways in this area of the road, to be able to have multiple residents there, and it would create a hazard. So whether the county, you know, has limitations on lot restrictions, I think that the county would have something to say in terms of safety and precautions in that area. The other thing is that, again, there were specific reasons when the county looked at this development and said, hey, why do we have five acres here and 11 acres here? I don't know what those reasons were, but to my knowledge, nothing's really changed in the area that would make the decision any different today, that that should be in five-acre plots, from a safety standpoint especially. The other thing is that the previous owner of this property, again, this is probably not going to do any good, but she happened to be our aunt, and she specifically was looking, you know, to have someone come into the community that wanted to build a house there. And the new owners were very well aware of that and aware that this had restrictions on it. So it's not like they came in blindsided that, that this is not development land. And you guys, that is neither here nor there, really. But if you weigh these restrictions, I think it sets a precedent for other people within the community. And as I'm hearing, there's a legal matter here, but you're talking about a lot of land there to be divided into five-acre tracts. And I think that it would put an undue burden on the infrastructure, on the roads in that area. It's hard enough to maintain them as it is. But if you're dividing that, I think you're, you're creating an undue burden on the infrastructure in the area. And unless you're willing to put up some pretty hard cash to be able to continue the maintenance of that area, then I think you're setting, setting up the county for a lot of extra expense. So I'm also submitting a petition. I have over 25 people that could not be here, that either live on County Road 3116 or they have property in Hidden Valley. Many of them are here. Just for a show of hands, how many of you are here for Hidden Valley? So this is the representation that we do have here. I want to read Ms. Jana Everett's statement, this is one of the petitions. She said, "When we purchased our home just two years ago, one of the main draws to the property was the restriction required, the 10 acres. Please do not allow this area to be subdivided due to the wish of one buyer. There are many individuals in this area who purchase the current, with the current regulations. When the individuals requested this division, they knew that was in place." So if you need a copy of this petition, I'm glad to present it. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Lori Lampkins, would you wish to speak? If you would, please hold your comments to three minutes. I didn't save it up front.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. So I just, we just moved into the area a couple of years ago. And that was also one of the things that drew us to the area, was that the lots were 10 acres or more, not 10 acres or less. And I also agree with your sentiments about the road, because the road's already in bad shape, and the county's already having a hard time keeping up with all the potholes. And if you just add more houses and more traffic, it does set a bad precedence, and I think it will cost more for the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Scott Parker?
The other thing that I have to say in regards to all this is the fact that, yes, the restrictions should remain in place. And secondarily, there are businesses being run in Hidden Valley that are tearing up the road on a daily basis. There's a semi-truck operation going on, several construction outfits. They don't maintain a certain stable speed coming through the subdivision, and it's tearing up the road regularly. And the 18-wheelers leave at 4:00 in the morning, come back around 5:00 in the evening, and they don't leave quietly either. They kind of barrel down the road. So along with the restriction about the splitting of Lot 7, I disagree with that. I think that should not be happening. And I've been having, I've had land out there for about 13 years since the document was initially created for Hidden Valley. And I've got a farming operation and a ranching operation going on with raising cattle and such. And the infrastructure was put in place first before I began my operations. And I just think the Hidden Valley is the perfect place for country living. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Larry Turner?
Good morning. I don't want to rehash what everybody else is saying. We all, I think, pretty much have the same thing to say. I did want to say, I believe all the lots on that side are that size because of that. They're not very deep once you get past the 11 acres. I just wanted to, I'm sorry, I don't know who you are.
I'm Daniel Ray. I'm the county's civil attorney.
Larry Turner, nice to meet you. One thing I didn't understand, and please speak slowly, and I'll get my crayons if necessary. You said that the county didn't really have any authority to act on these. Then what is it that is being asked of them? I don't understand what the property owner is asking for from them if they can't actually exercise any authority over it.
I may have missed something. The county definitely has authority to act on replats. That's what's being requested here, to change one lot into two. And the county is the only jurisdiction that actually has authority to act on that, other than the district court. And they can only, the district court can only do it if the county does it wrong. What he's asking is to change those one into two. What I'm saying that the county doesn't have authority to do is to act on private subdivision regulation, or private subdivision.
Restrictions.
Restrictions.
Yes.
And so the county doesn't have the legal authority to look into and make decisions based on what an HOA says or any other restriction that runs with the land that's in the property records. The county clerk is required to take those property records as long as they meet all the requirements. Those basically become effective against. And the future buyers and the developers have rights of action under state law against each other. But those don't impact what the county can do, at least under the way that the current law has been interpreted by the courts of appeal in this area.
It's not just the county. The city, this was in the city limits of Greenville. City of Greenville couldn't do anything with the restrictions. No city, no governmental entity has any control over private property rights, which are what the restrictions are.
I understand. I guess what I'm, is exactly what this gentleman is looking for from the county. Y'all have the ability to deny the replat?
Not if it meets.
If it doesn't meet the requirements of the subdivision regulations.
If, if it meets the requirement, and I'm looking at the Commissioners' Court, may refuse to approve a plat if it does not meet the requirements prescribed by, under the chapter, or if the bond requires them, the chapter is not filed. There are no exceptions with respect to new plats for deed restriction, HOA documents. This means that the county receives plat, basically that they shall, shall approve it. And then, like he said, that becomes a civil, and that's where you have to go with district. In other words, we do not, it's not a decision for us to make. And if it's a legal plat, which from my understanding, this is a legally plat, it meets all the specifications of all rules and regulations, we're required to pass it.
Unless there are any reasons that you wouldn't pass it, such as things like we.
If they didn't have enough road frontage, we would turn it down if they didn't have the required road frontages in our subdivision rules. That would be one thing we'd turn it down for.
Safety issues?
There are safety issues in the subdivision regulations that relate to those are called flag lots, which are long skinny pieces. Obviously, it's not safe to have a whole bunch of driveways right next to each other on big property that has a bunch of little skinny pieces. So those are outlawed specifically for safety. Most of the safety-related issues that you're talking about come down to tax law requirements and turnout areas. Those are all those specifically listed to remove subjectivity from the Commissioners' Court's decisions, and so that it doesn't put the county taxpayers in line to pay for lawsuits that are wrong based on how people feel about certain things. The county spent about a quarter million dollars with outside engineers and experts in that planning area specifically to remove subjective decision-making from what they're looking at. And so there are safety-related issues, but they don't relate to the way that that was set up.
So what's the point of this meeting?
We're required by state law to notify people of certain business.
So that it doesn't really matter what we say, pretty much?
It doesn't matter what you say if your position is that it should be denied because of a restricted, private deed restriction. That's correct. But we're also not allowed to put that in the letter, the language of the letter is spelled out in state law.
You're saying the county is not required to follow those restrictions, but you can legally negate them and override them is what you're doing here?
It will, yeah, you're right, it will have that effect. That is not the direct decision of this court, but it doesn't negate your ability if those restrictions are valid and in place. It doesn't negate any of y'all's ability to enforce them yourself. The government just isn't in a position to be able to legally do that for you.
Can anyone tell us if the restrictions that are in place as far as the roads and the in and out, that would be violated or something like this property?
It clearly appears that it would be, but this court can't do that because the government cannot provide legal advice, which is what that is. So basically, any attorney that does property disputes would be able to look at that and pretty quickly tell whether they're valid and whether this violates the rules. But just on the surface, I mean, the whole point of me giving the legal memorandum to the Commissioners' Court, was that it does appear, at least on the surface, to violate the 10-acre restriction.
So, I believe, Judge, let me say that the county would uphold those restrictions as a body to look at it?
No, Daniel referred to it as required to file any restrictions or any documents that meet the requirements for filing, being notarized or whatever the requirements are. So there's, but that's all that was talked about.
But this body would look at that information and make the decision?
No, they're not allowed to. They, they're not allowed to let that have any influence on their decision. Certainly, the county did look at that. And that's the only reason we knew that this was going to be an issue in the first place. But unfortunately, the Commissioners' Courts in this county are basically just 100, one of 254 counties that are all treated exactly the same under the laws that we're talking about. And no county is allowed to make a decision with respect to a private deed restriction.
So you're saying they're gentrified, they're going to have to approve it no matter what, and their only recourse is to the court?
Not no matter what. I mean, as long as it meets the other requirements for notice and everything like that. But if it does, and it is approved, then your only recourse would be to the court.
Has the property been reviewed to ensure that it meets the safety requirements if you were discussing this specific property?
Yes. That's Brian Cool that's at the back. That's his job. Every time there's a new plat that comes in, his department looks at the subdivision regulations to ensure that there are no violations. Most of them are pretty obvious, like the flag lot restrictions or the road frontage. But yeah, every plat that goes through court, including all the ones that are on the court today, goes through a process to ensure that they meet those requirements.
Daniel, can we either table this or approve it, subject to determining whether or not we got all the notices out correctly?
It would be better to vote to move the decision to a specific meeting in the future. And the good thing is, we have, there's three weeks in between now and the next meeting. And so to the extent that there needs to be additional notices sent out, those have to be sent out within a 15-day period. It has to be a 15-day notice in the newspaper. And so if you wanted to vote to postpone, not table, because that's going to be a different thing.
Okay.
But if you want to vote to postpone till July 13, then we could, you know, confirm at least all the appropriate notices were sent under the law and then, you know, take action about.
Well, I'd sure like to do that if the court agrees with me. I think we ought to make sure we've got all the notices out to everybody.
I'm done for now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation.
Okay, anybody else? No, then I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, I'll make a motion that we reschedule this for the July 13 meeting to just take it up and discuss it and to confirm that all the notices were done correctly. And we got everybody notified?
Specifically what you're asking for is the motion to postpone until the 13th.
Okay, so I'm making a motion to postpone this action item number 13 until the July 13 meeting.
So moved.
Got a motion in second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank y'all for coming. We appreciate your comments. Okay, we'll move back to action item number one, Resolution Extending and or Modifying April 28, 2020 COVID-19 Related Resolution, Social Distancing Guidelines to Prevent the Spread of COVID-19. Daniel Ray.
Okay, this is very similar to the one from two weeks ago. The only thing it does that's slightly different is there's a three-week-long extension here instead of a two-week because there's three weeks until our next meeting. Otherwise, all of the terms are the same. It still adopts and explicitly approves the administrative orders from the administrative judge, which is currently Andy Bench. Other than that, there's no, no other changes.
Okay, Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number two, Approved Work Authorization for Road Bond Work as Outlined in the Professional Services Agreement with Fries and Nichols, executed on April 11, 2017, and Subsequent Amendments. An authorized County Judge Bobby Stovall signed documents related to an approving same on behalf of Hunt County. Dee, you want to make any comments or? And thank you for all the work you do, Dee. We appreciate everything you do for us.
Enjoy doing it. I think Daniel sent each of you a follow-up email in addition to what you received in your agenda. And you have all. your agenda, and you, you have all the work authorizations, and I had provided Daniel a chronology of kind of the events that have taken place since the bond issue was passed in November 2016. And the last action you took was to actually sell the bonds, and that was in February of this year, $6 million. And those were sold, and the money was delivered in March. And so those funds are currently being, being held. You'll recall that we had some problems with communications, and we had to wait to have the meeting until later, and then we had to scramble to get all of you back, miss your lunch, so we could vote and get it in. And you got a great interest rate, 1.47%, which is really, really low. And at that time, what the plan was, was to spend that money over a three-year period out through 2023 to, to basically deal with the, the major projects that are still to be engineered and made shovel ready. So those were 1570, south and east of I-30, 1570 north of I-30, 1903 and 36 from I-30 to Cattle Mills. And that one now is planned to, to join with FM6 just west of Cattle Mills to create a regional road that will give access from the Wiley, Nevada, Josephine area all the way to I-30. So that'll, that'll be a great project. And then the, the Highway 2411 project in, in Commerce. So those, those are the four major projects. The plan was to engineer those and have them shovel ready over the next three years, spend the money over that time. As I explained, we, we had a, our quarterly call with the North Central Texas Council of Governments and TechDOT, and there was a lot of discussion about plans, major projects on I-35 and down in the Houston area, multi billions of dollars that probably are going to fall behind. And as a part of that discussion, we began to formulate a plan that if we could get our project shovel ready by the last half of 2022, there's a great opportunity perhaps that some of those unspent dollars, which TechDOT likes to keep spending the money on a regular schedule, that those funds would become available to fund some of these projects in, in Hunt County. By comparison, these are very small projects compared to the Houston and I-35 projects. But, but, but really what we're asking you to do today, or what we've recommended, the steering committee has recommended to Judge Stovall, is to, to undertake these work authorizations to get these four projects shovel ready by the last half of 2022. So they will be ready hopefully to, to bid if funds become available in, in, in the last half of, of 2022. Currently, those plans, because of all the money that's being spent on I-30, those projects are, are basically scheduled to be let in 2025. And if we can move them up by two to three years, that'd be a great benefit to, to our county. I think most of you know the, the growth that is taking place, particularly, you know, the 1570, 1903, 36 area. And so it'll, it'll be a real boon, I think, to transportation and capacity in Hunt County if we, if we can get this done. So, so the recommendation of the steering committee to Judge Stovall was to move forward with these authorizations. There's five of them, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. The amount of money still is, is still about $5,985,000, which is the amount that you'd planned to spend when the bonds were issued. It's just that the work will be completed a year earlier.
Dee, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, you can correct me if I am, but we originally had funding for all of these, but they were scheduled earlier, and we had it set up to have them ready as the funding was becoming available. Now we got pushed forward on some of those dates because of COVID. And what we're really wanting to do now is pull them back and try to get them back closer to where they really, really originally were, or even quicker. Is that correct in saying that?
Well, I think, I think the, the, the plan was to begin letting these in 2022, 2023. The, the problem that came was that when the state allocated an additional $104 million for the I-30 projects, in addition to some money that was already there from category 12, which was as a result of, of Hunt County doing something on its own to deal with transportation, that caused us to, to, to be so high on the allocation scale for a rural county that they had to push these projects outside a four-year window. And so that four-year window took most of these projects, not the Commerce project, but, because that already had some money allocated. But it took the other projects out to the 2024, 25 fiscal year. And so this, hopefully this will, if they're shovel ready, and one of the things we're working with TechDOT to do is try to figure out how to get the right-of-way issues resolved because normally TechDOT doesn't want to resolve right-of-way issues until projects are shovel ready and they're ready to let. Because they are running short because of property values going up and condemnation costs, they're running short of money. And so that's, that's an issue that we're having some discussions with TechDOT about some hopefully creative ways of, of dealing with that. But particularly the, the 1903, 36 project has, has quite a few right-of-way requirements because it, it creates a new pathway to, to join six and, and doesn't follow an existing foreign market road. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I, I just want to make sure we were all clear on that. Okay, any Commissioners, you got any questions?
I don't have a question, I have a statement. I, I want to thank you and the steering committee for all your advice, all your hard work, and I'm talking about ever since this beginning, because you truly have affected this county. And you're considered very honorable by, I believe, all the people that I know. But the thing about it for you, you've gone beyond what a citizen, a good citizen is required to do, and this Commissioner's Court and the steering committee basically has done that job. And I want to thank you for the hard work because you have put in a lot of hard work. This all started back with Judge Horn.
2010, wasn't it, Dee?
Yep. I mean, it started a long time ago, and you got the judge here backing everything, and I believe the Commissioners have always backed what you're recommending, and I appreciate you.
Well, and we, I want, I want to be clear, we, we don't expect a rubber stamp, okay?
That's right.
We, we, we want to provide you with good information so that you can analyze that and, and then act on, on the judge's recommendations. But, you know, we, we don't expect a rubber stamp, and if any of you ever have any questions about any of this, please, please let me know. It's, it's a pleasure to, to do this. This is a, a great place to live and raise a family, and we want to keep it that way.
Thank you, Dee. All right, Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank y'all.
Oh, I didn't.
Wayne and Freeze and Nichols. Yep, thank y'all.
I didn't know that we were going to be here today, so I said, you must be needing some money. These guys are great to work with, appreciate their support, the fact that they came.
Yep, thank y'all for being here. Chris and Wayne. Okay, Commissioners, action item number three, to procure the Hart Inter-Civic Incorporated Certain Hardware, Software, Software Support Services and Warranty Services in the amount of $757,583 for new voting equipment. Jeannie, you want to come up and introduce your folks for us and tell us what we got going on?
Absolutely. Good morning.
Morning.
This morning.
Turn your mic, your mic down just a little.
Sorry.
There you go.
This morning I brought with me Felice Liston and Tony Cervantes from Hart Inter-Civic. They have provided us customer support and equipment for the last close to 20 years, 17 years. The last time Hunt County purchased equipment was in 2004, I believe, so we're running on 17-year-old equipment. I have an office with 12 E-slates that have failed recently in just the elections that we have conducted in May and June. So we're kind of in a have-to position. In front of you, in front of your packet, this morning you have a quote from Hart Inter-Civic for the purchase of this new voting equipment. And after reviewing our office options, we decided that the Verity voting system met the needs of Hunt County's voting public. Several of you attended the hands-on demonstration and saw that it, how it worked. It provides the accuracy of hand-marked paper ballots that are fed into a scanner in order to cast a ballot. So the paper ballot system allows the voter to verify their candidate selection prior to casting their ballot. Everything is paper, even though there is an electronic component. It provides a printer paper voter record with a verifiable paper trail, which is very important to ensure the accuracy and the integrity of our elections. I would appreciate you reviewing that quote, and if you have any questions, again, I have Felice and Tony here from Inter-Civic that are a huge support to our office.
Good, thank you, Jeannie.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I don't, did all of you get a chance to go look at the equipment? Good, I mean, it's, it's very smooth to operate. I think it's something really good for the county moving forward. You know, and just so the court knows, I've asked Jeannie to give us a, a higher budget for workers, just so we got additional people to train at the first few elections to make sure this goes smooth with new equipment. And old people like me, we'll, we'll get confused and we might need a little extra help in, in understanding how the new equipment works. So I want us to be adequately prepared to be able to train the public and have them confident on how the system works. And so Commissioners, y'all got any questions from?
Your Honor, I went down there and referenced a look in this, and you know, I'm always used to using paper.
Right.
Anyway, I looked at the little lady, and I said, well, what kind of deal are you going to give us on? And she says, that's kind of crazy, that's what the judge's saying, first thing they ask. But they were very, very good.
They were just old people, I think. That's probably.
Yeah, Jeannie, we, we obviously have a master agreement here to review, but could you explain for the general public and for our benefit exactly what is included in this, in this packet that we're purchasing? Machines, there are different types of machines included in that, warranties, whatever, whatever it may be?
I see what I would like to, let Felice, she's more familiar with it. I've seen it, I've seen it a couple of times, but I think she could give us a little.
That'd be perfect.
Yep, Judge, Commissioners.
Morning.
County Clerk, County Auditor, thank you. My name is Felice Liston with Hart. Yes, the quote that you have in front of you is everything soup to nuts, including the project implementation, training for Ms. Ash and her staff, acceptance testing, which is required by the state. When the equipment comes in, every single piece of equipment is checked and validated, that it does what it is supposed to do. As well as the first election that you will use the new equipment, there will be an onsite support person from Hart located in the Elections Office to answer any questions or concerns or just help out the Elections and, and staff. So everything is included up to the first election. If you'd like additional onsite support, that's always an option. The, the annual license and support for the first year is also included in that quote, as are all of the devices. I believe there's 40 devices of each, which means the 40 of the touchscreen devices that the voter now votes on receives a paper ballot of all of their selections, and then 40 of the scanners that are located in each polling location that the voter would feed that ballot into. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
What kind of warranty do these machines have, I mean?
That's a great question. One-year warranty, and there is an option for extended hardware warranty after that first year. Our recommendation is always to watch that first year, see if there are any issues that come up that require any type of warranty or repair work, and then balance that hourly rate that we have for fixing that equipment versus the device rate that we have for that extended hardware warranty. And we can help Ms. Ash and her staff do that after the first year, if you'd like to see a comparison of that, to see if it's worth getting the extended hardware warranty or if y'all are fine just going from device to device.
Okay.
The $37,329,000, which is the annual fee.
Yes.
Okay, what's, that is inclusive of the numbers on the back page? That include that first, this first annual, correct?
Yes, sir. That's all included.
Okay, and then there's fees in reference to mileage and stuff like that, having to come out and look at it in reference to that as far as working on it during that time. Are there any other fees?
The only other fees that you would have because you are moving to a full paper-based system is the paper ballot, the stock. You are accustomed to that already because you have hand-marked paper ballots, so that is an ongoing fee that you would have.
I, I had one question that I was wanting to find out. I noticed that, I think it was 300 and something dollars each, I can't remember, it had to do with a, a part of it, the printing aspect of it. I have it marked if I might. What I was wanting to find out, why would we have not more than one spare? It's a report printing, one spare, $380, laser printer of starter cartridge. Why wouldn't we have more than one if we have as many as possibly 40 different places?
Well, that report printer is available for the Elections Staff to print any type of reports that come from the system after the election is tabulated. So for example, if a news channel wanted a copy of all of the results from that particular election, that report printer can be used for that. So it's not anything that would be used as often or as consistently as the voting devices would be. Also, you have the ability, if something were to happen to that report printer, you have the ability to save all of those reports that that printer can print to a PDF, so that could also be soft copied over to the news channel, again, if something happened to that particular printer. So it's not used as often necessarily as the voting devices are. So you, I wouldn't recommend a spare at this time. If you want to spend the money, you certainly can to buy a spare, but I wouldn't recommend it.
Okay, we've got a, a resolution here from the Hunt County Republican Executive Committee, and it says that the Hunt County Republican Executive Committee recommends that the Hunt County Commissioner's Court approve a voting system that offers all voters an auditable paper trail. And this, I understand, does just that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. All voters, whether they are able-bodied voters or they are voters with disabilities, now have the auditable paper trail that they would review prior to casting their ballot. So everyone has a paper trail.
Mr. Hale, is that satisfied, you think?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Any other questions?
I would like to confirm this, and we appreciate you, Jeannie. All this has been verified and clarified through the Secretary of the State, which you filled all that stuff out. Am I correct?
Yes, the system, yes, the system that you're taking a look at and considering has been federally certified. That is a requirement of the State, Secretary of State's office, and it has also been state certified, and it has been used in Texas since 2019.
If the state takes up this voting bill again in special session, and they make changes that require changes on the equipment, will that be something that'd be taken care of without additional expense to us?
We don't anticipate any changes if SB7 is taken up again because the majority of SB7 around voting devices has to do with an auditable paper trail, which is what you're purchasing.
Okay.
Is there any other counties in the state of Texas that use this system?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Tarrant County is probably the closest county that you have, Hayes County, Hood County. So there are quite a few counties, and I can provide that list to Ms. Ash.
Fanning County have, do y'all, Fanning County?
No.
Any other questions? Commissioners, we good?
We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, this, you know, this will be the first, I guess, voting equipment like this. We're purchasing the first equipment purchase, I think you said, 17 years ago. That was done with grants from the federal government, I believe, when.
Yes.
when they first went to electronic voting and required electronic voting, I believe. Ms. Ash looked at the Secretary of State. I think the legislature passed some voting bills that had far as in the budget, the Secretary of State's budget, to buy some equipment. We're not going to be eligible for any of that money. We checked on that. I was hoping we might get some help from some of that thirty-two million, and I believe that they gave it to, but it's for people that we don't meet that requirement. So, I'm not going to say this is an emergency, but it sure needs to get done. And if we get it done, if we approve this today, we can get delivery maybe sometime in August.
Or sooner.
Or sooner, so we can start getting trained and get ready for a November election, which is going to take some time. So, time is sort of the essence, because we've got another election coming up, so.
Judge, can I say, ask you one more question?
Sure, absolutely.
Ma'am, the way things nowadays are upgrading, how does this machine compare, these voting machines compare to upgrading them to different standards they may have five years from now?
That's a great question. With our previous voting system, the voting system that you're currently using, that's called the Hart Voting System. And the first version that came out was version one point oh. And by the time that Hart Voting System was not being manufactured any longer, it was version six point two point one. So, we are constantly, as an organization, working with all states that we are certified in to make sure that we have the most recent requirements. And usually, when any new requirements are mandated by the legislature, there is a certain time period that those requirements have to then be incorporated into a voting system. So, that is part of and covered under the agreement that you have for any type of versions or any type of upgrades that need to be taken care of.
Okay. All right.
That answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners. Entertained a motion?
Excuse me.
Question.
Okay. How are we going to pay for this?
Capital Improvement.
Okay. Can I make a recommendation?
Yes, sir.
That we go ahead and approve line item transfer from capital improvement contingency line item to a line item to be set up for the purchase of this equipment, and then we go ahead and approve it today.
Put a line item transfer in the voter's budget?
Budget amendment.
A budget amendment, or the voter's administration office, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. And the amount of the purchase, so that we can go ahead and make the purchase, not have to wait three weeks for a budget transfer.
Perfect. Okay. Commissioners, entertain a motion for the approval of action item number three, along with the moving the money out of contingency out of...
Out of the... In the Capital Projects Fund, from contingency to the voter registration line item to pay for this.
To be created. Was that the one?
Yeah, we'll have to create that line item.
Okay. All right.
Still moved.
Got a motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank y'all for coming. Appreciate you. All right. Action item number four, to review and approve merchant processing agreement with automatic merchant systems in Merrick Bank. Jennifer, you going to comment?
This is for credit card processing with the public portal with Tyler Evil, so customers can print off and pay for copies at home.
Okay. Are they the only ones that do that with the tile?
Each their own.
Yeah, okay. Perfect. All right. Entertain a motion for approval?
Still move.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number five, the acceptance of a letter of resignation from Jennifer Lenniswag, County Clerk, effective July thirty-first. I don't like this one.
Your Honor, may I say something?
Sure.
I want to tell you something. I wish we could not accept this letter, to be quite honest with you. And I know everybody on this Commissioners Court feels that way. But I want to bring up something else, and I'd like, if you will, make a picture with, in reference to the plaque that you have. You have it with you. I would like to recognize the plaque that she received, and I would like to have a picture made with the Commissioners in this court. And if you will, Your Honor, would you read what that says?
This is presented to Honorable Jennifer Lenniswag, Hunt County, for distinguished in exemplary service as County Clerk of the Year for the State of Texas. Wow. County and District Clerks Association of Texas, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Congratulations, Jennifer. Yeah. I thought you were going to get this. Now, you want to go down and get a picture made? Somebody got a camera?
Let's go down and get that camera.
I may fall and let you catch me. He's on his knees.
No.
Don't hop along, Cash.
Sit here a second.
I am. One, two, three. Got it. I got a bunch of it.
I thought Jennifer was going to let you catch me. No.
Okay, Commissioners, I'll accept a motion to approve action item number five.
Still move with love.
With regrets.
With love.
Second.
Second.
Mark second.
Mark second. Okay. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number six, request for additional assistance allotment from Tech dot for Hunt County. This authorizes me to sign a letter, request Tech dot to provide us with more material, if any is available. Entertain a motion for approval?
Still move.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number seven, the holiday schedule, the Hunt County holiday schedule for twenty twenty-two. Commissioners, that's...you've got that in your packet. Let me get to mine. I think we need to discuss this a little bit. Yeah, you got it. It's fine.
We need to have a correction in reference to this, but also, if I may...
Yeah, twenty twenty-two, we've already corrected the other one.
But also, basically, in reference to the holiday, June nineteenth.
Well, that's what I want to discuss, because right now, our policy says there's eleven holidays. And with the normal holidays we take right now, we've got eleven on the schedule. And then last week, or week before last, I guess the President announced a new national holiday for June tenth, which then would give us twelve days. So, we either need to make exception to our policy and add June nineteenth holiday to it, or we need to drop a day off somewhere and keep it at eleven. I don't know what everybody's pleasure is. Anybody thought about it? What day? Anybody know what day the nineteenth falls on next year?
It falls on a Sunday.
On a Sunday?
Yes, sir.
Is there some rain on Friday?
Huh?
Do I know?
It's going to be a Friday, no matter when it gets.
Oh, is that right? I hadn't heard that. Well, why don't we table this and then take it up next meeting and find out for sure? Can you research that for us, Jeanne? You'll make sure. Thank you for bringing that up, Michelle. I didn't hear that in any of the announcements. But in the meantime, we'll be thinking about it. Do we want to change our...I guess it's in our Personnel Manual for eleven days. If we want to change it to twelve going forward, because it's going to be the same way every year. There's no reason to make any exception every year for it. We ought to just change the policy, or if we're going to stay with eleven days, then we need to figure out what day we're going to cut out of it. So, we'll just table this until the next meeting, and we'll get the answer to that question.
Thank you, Judge.
Yeah. Action item number eight, Monthly Treasury Report for May twenty twenty-one. Brittany?
Thank you. Good morning. You've got the reporting in your packets for the Treasury Report for May twenty twenty-one. Our month-end balance for the end of May was sixty-seven million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, ninety-five dollars and seventy-four cents. That is cash in bank and invested funds. The most significant difference that we had for the month of May is that we received and recorded our American Rescue Plan funds in a newly-created fund, Fund Forty-One. That's on that first sheet of the monthly report. You'll see that we received in the nine point five million dollars. That's now accounted in our month-end balance as well for May.
Okay. Commissioners, got any questions? We currently just have that money just sitting in a checking account.
It's in our general fund, yes, sir, in our checking account.
I don't know, you know, what the court wants to do about it. I mean, we don't...the feds are still telling us it's going to be middle of July to August first before we get the final direction on how we can even spend the money. So, we're kind of having to sit on it and wait and get it. We've talked to a couple of different contractors, maybe, about helping us to make sure we dot the i's and cross the t's when we start going forward with this program. And they don't even want to really talk to us yet until they know if they're going to be able to get paid out of the money, or if they're going to have to tell us where we're going to have to come up with the money from to help us. So, we're kind of in limbo. That's a lot of money just sat there, not drawing any interest. I guess, you know, we can leave it up to our commission, our board, and move that money. Is that what we need to do, Brittany?
We can create an investment account and everything within our logic. I think with me, that's our highest yield of our government pools that we have, and it is liquid, so that we can move it as freely as we need to.
So, does Courtney do that, or does our Investment Committee need to do that?
We could. I could put something on the agenda for next time, that we could do that, because I'll have to get paperwork if we decide to do that. And our Investment Committee can decide to move that money into an account, and then I'll just bring the paperwork to court next time.
Okay. I think we ought to set that in motion, just in case it takes longer than August or something. That's a lot of money sat there, not drawing any interest.
May I ask the officer a question? Is there anything in there advising in reference to any interest that's on this possible money? Is there anything?
I think it goes into the pot. We can spend...we have to spend it, under those regulations, the way I remember it.
Fella, basically, I'm just not commenting on this, since Judge Bench wants us to not get involved. I did...I am a member of the Investment Committee, and I've even abstained from voting. But I did make a comment to Brittany, just about, not about the ARP, just about the total investments and all. We're not earning a whole lot of interest, but the fact that we do have a large percentage in logic about the possibility of seeing if the bank would pay us more money for some of that money we're not using and collateralize it. And that way, we spread our amount of investment, because we're not supposed to have a whole lot in any one place. And it looks like we're getting a little bit of high concentration in logic. And that was my comment to her. And I'll just leave it at that. If you have any other questions, just about this item, I'll be happy to answer it.
But it is. I believe the money is allowed to be in an interest-bearing account.
It is. I mean, it can make interest, but I think the interest has to be spent as same as you would any other.
And put it back into that fund.
It has to be put back into that fund. We can't put it into the general account, is my understanding with their guidance as of today, or the last time I looked at it, a few days ago. Why don't we get our committee together, and we got three weeks before the next meeting. We meet next week or so.
Absolutely.
And let's decide what we want to do. Maybe we can get a meeting with the bank, is Bruce is thinking about. So, we'll talk about it later, and let's try to do that and get it on the next agenda.
Sounds good.
Entertain a motion for approval of a number...action item number eight.
Still move.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number nine, upgrade of approximately two-thousand-one-hundred-and-twelve feet of County Road forty-one twenty from Rock to Oil Sand Precinct Four, money in escrow.
Make a motion to approve upgrade of twenty-one hundred and twelve feet of County Road forty-one twenty with money in escrow.
Second.
Judge, I'm sorry. I don't know if this is out of order, but just for the elected court to make a note that I'm abstaining from this vote, just to avoid a potential conflict.
I understand. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous with the mark abstaining. Action number ten, request to construct electrical power distribution facilities across County Road twenty-five, twenty-six.
Make a motion. We approve the request on the power distribution on County Road twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number eleven, a request to construct electrical power distribution facilities across County Road twenty-six fifty-eight.
Make a motion. We approve the electrical power distribution facility across County Road twenty-six fifty-eight.
With normal stipulations or...
Under normal stipulations on both of them. I'm sorry, the previous one also.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Do we need to go back to ten, Jennifer? Let's go back and amend action number ten to approve it with normal stipulations. Need a motion to that effect?
I make a motion. We approve.
Second.
The electrical distribution on twenty-five, twenty-six, under normal stipulations.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number twelve, a variance request for Sky Meadows View Lot two oh seven, phase two, from one hundred and fifty to one hundred and twenty-five feet, two acre tracks. Ryan, you want to come advise us? We'll get with y'all in just a second.
All right, Commissioners, you have a copy of a survey, and you also have a letter that was typed up and signed by Mr. Lopez. Well, I assisted him, so that we had all the information in the letter, and he approved and signed. As you can see, this is a four-acre tract. They are proposing dividing it into two two-acre tracks. The biggest problem is it only has two hundred and fifty feet of frontage on the four-acre tract. Divided in half, that's a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage. Subdivision rules state that one hundred and fifty feet of frontage is needed for a two-acre lot. So, they are about twenty-five feet shy on each lot from the subdivision rules. So, that's where we're at. And they are here to tell us what's going on and to speak and...
Okay. Y'all like to speak? Give me your name and address, please.
Good morning, everybody. I'm just here to translate for Noel Lopez.
Okay. What's his address?
Your contact address is what we need. It's twenty twenty-nine...
He's asking for your personal address.
Your personal address. Where you get your mail?
Twelve fifty-three.
For Mr. Lopez's address?
Yes.
Oh, that's twelve fifty-three, Dennis Call, Anjo, Texas.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. What is...do you want to say anything?
Yeah. We just want to divide the four-acre land into two, just to provide, try to build the house for a family member.
Okay. Is there already a house on there?
There is a house on Lot two oh six.
Okay. How close is it to the property land?
It's like right next to it. It's...he's trying to divide the other four land, the Lot two oh seven, and he's trying to build it on the...
On Lot two oh...
And, no, he's trying to build it on Lot two oh seven B.
So, there's a house sitting on...is it two oh six now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And he's trying to divide the other four acres into two, and he's trying to provide, build the house on, for Lot two oh B.
Two oh seven B?
Two oh seven, yeah.
What about two oh seven A?
Just, we don't have... Just, we don't have, not planning to build nothing on it right now. But we're just trying to divide it. He's trying to divide it for now and build on, on 207B.
Okay. Commissioners, got any comments, concerns?
I want to tell you something. It's my opinion that I understand them wanting to split property up and possibly get, but down to a, down to making these things 125 foot, that's way out of our range, what's required.
Makes it almost like a landing strip too, 700 foot of depth. It's, it's a lot more proportional in a lot better lot, staying as one lot.
Yeah. There's neighbors there that have two acre land and built houses for family members also.
Mm-hmm.
There is quite a few neighbors there that have done that.
They, they haven't come through this court.
Oh, okay.
Hey, Brian, we haven't had any since I've been here.
So.
Not, not since we have our new subdivision rules that went into effect December last year, I believe.
Um. I'm kind of like Commissioner Martin, 25 feet per lot's quite a bit to try to give a variance to, especially when we've had some less than 10, 15 that we wouldn't even give a variance to.
Right.
I agree.
Any other comments, commissioners? Can you entertain a motion for approval of action item number 12? With no motion, the, action item number 12 dies. It's not approved. All right. Action item number 14, replat of Lot 24 of Sabine Mesa in Precinct 2. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing if anybody wants to comment on a replat of Lot 24 Sabine Mesa in Precinct 2. No public comments. Commissioners, entertain a motion.
Your honor, we're, I believe this was Hidden Valley, correct?
No, 13, we weren't taking action on it.
Okay, okay, that's what I was wanting to make sure.
Yeah, 14 is Sabine Mesa, Mason.
Yeah.
We were, we already went by it, Phil.
Thank you.
The only comment that I have on Sabine Mesa, their utility easement along the frontage is only 15 feet. That will have to be changed to 20 feet on the final copies that, that y'all sign, they're willing to.
Okay.
On the County Road 259?
On, on both county roads.
Both. Both the lots across the front, yeah. Yeah, both roads.
Okay.
Any other comments? Entertained a motion for approval, action item number 14, with the requirement that they amend the flat to 20 foot utility easement across the front of both lots.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 15, the final plaid of Connor Edition Precinct 1.
This one also needs a 20 foot easement across the front. They gave us 15. The old rules were 15 feet, the new rules are 20.
Right.
Some of these guys haven't updated their template yet.
All right. Entertained a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
With the 20 foot?
Yes, the final plat be amended for the 20 foot utility easement.
Got a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 16, the final plaid of MM Johnson Edition Precinct 2.
Hey, guess what? This one needs a 20 foot easement on the front, as opposed to the 15 foot that they gave us.
Entertained a motion for approval?
Make a motion, we approve the final plat for MM Johnson Edition.
With the 20 foot addition of?
20 foot.
For utility easement across the front lot?
Yes. What you said.
What I said, okay. Entertained a motion for approval of MM Johnson Edition Precinct 2 with a 20 foot easement across the front.
So moved.
Can I say that?
Yeah. You can. Got a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 17, the final plaid of Tukum Cary Tupan Cary Ranch Estates, Phase 3 in Precinct 2.
Guys, we have a letter of recommendation from the Hunt County Engineering Representative. This is one, they are having to build a road and improve infrastructure in the subdivision or in this phase. So this approval is just that, it's an approval, it will have to be accepted later after construction, unless they want to provide us.
This is approval of the plat, we just don't sign and record it until all the construction works finished and we've accepted it and, under the new rules. But they're building it under the old rules because this whole subdivision started under the old rules.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Everybody understand that? It's, it's not quite in compliance with our new rules, but they'd already preliminary plated it and it's been plated preliminarily for quite a few years and it, it abuts to a street that was already designed differently than what we require now, but we're letting them continue on under the old rules since it was already engineered and designed originally.
And they, the, the engineering plans were approved at preliminary for, for both phases that had construction.
Right.
Uh. This one they had already.
Not up to our current new standards, but because they grandfathered in, because they'd already started prior to the approval of our new subdivision rules.
And they're not far off from the new, from the new standards as far as what will work.
Just a little narrower road or something, isn't it? Is that the only difference or?
Uh, I think it was a little bit flatter than what.
Yes, right.
What is allowed now. They did go back in and they brought some of the, some of the plans up, up to our current standards, stuff that they could fix moving forward instead of having to go back and redo some of their old stuff. So they, they were trying to be compliant and, and.
We've been trying to work with them, make sure that we don't make a hand to redo something they've already done.
That's right.
Just because we changed the rules in midstream, so.
My only concern is the, the water that's going to be coming off the driveways and rooftops and streets down there to that little creek that flows back to the east, it's going to be dumping more water downstream, you know, on those people that live down there in the, in the lower, lower part of the area on the east side of 2526 when that water does make it down through there. That's my concern, is the drainage info on it. I mean, do we have to go by that, what they already had or is it?
We, we have to go by what they had already turned in at preliminary and approved then because it was approved under the old subdivision regulations.
Okay.
Okay. Entertained a motion for approval, action item number 17.
I make a motion, we approve my plat on Tupan Cary Ranch.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 18, the final plaid of Oakwood Edition Precinct 3.
This one, there is one lot. Lot 1 on the subdivision has a little bit of floodplain on the back corner of it. It's not a significant amount, but with floodplain on the lot, you need a finished floor elevation established by an engineer. The, I actually have the final copies that are ready for signatures and they have a note on them stating that the finished floor elevation will be established whenever they get their development permit because we have an issue with FEMA redoing some of the data that is available to us now. That new data will be out in September. So we don't want to have an established finished floor now that doesn't correspond with the new data that comes out in September.
So how are we going, how are we going to deal with that?
Your honor.
Stop somebody from doing it?
May I interject in reference there? I think we ought to hold back until we have it. I'm reading that last paragraph. Addition, Lot 1 has the current FEMA floodplain, a minimum flush floor elevation would be not, would need to be set. However, given the current FEMA report, we recommend waiting until that report is provided to ensure the development structure. I say we put it on the back burner until that is done.
I don't think we can wait that long.
I don't, I don't think we can wait until September to approve this.
We got to approve these within 60 days.
Is there any way that we can put the stipulation in there that we can hold it to them?
I don't know the answer to that, but I have to research that.
I, I don't know how we do it.
I mean, Taylor is even saying, if we allow them to do it and something happens, we okayed one, then we knew there possibly a problem on. That's what my problem is.
Yeah, but that's not, I mean, we have to follow the state law, which gives us a very specific time period. The legislature did that, this thing called a shot clock in it two years ago. And we can't hold back, we don't have the legal ability to hold back approval for plats based on something that might happen in the future. There's a very limited amount of things that we can even hold back on. But it's also not the county's fault if FEMA, you know, changes the map. That's an issue that we're just going to have to deal with later. I don't think that there's any way, at least I can think of off the top of my head right now, just to approve a plat that say, in the future, if FEMA doesn't let you live there, then this, you know, we're voting today to approve it subject to that. That's just going to be an issue between them and their flood insurance company if they, if they've already built in someplace. I mean, there are many, many places, just in Greenville, where FEMA changed the flood map and greatly extended the floodway and the floodplain and.
Lot of Turtle Creek and a lot of Oak Village, both of them.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so that's not anything, to the extent you're worried about the county or the commissioner getting in trouble for that, that can't happen because of sovereign immunity, it qualifies.
But our rules require that it has minimum finished floor on it, if it has a floodplain. Can we not just approve it and exclude Lot 1, have them take, redo the plat and take Lot 1 off of it and then resubmit Lot 1 in September when they get it? And maybe we can waive the fee for that or something? Do we waive, do we have the right to waive the fee since it's kind of unusual?
You don't have to waive the fee, that's more of a cooperative type thing. I don't know, because I have a researcher, whether you can in court today say yes to everything besides one plat. I think that you can't do that, but.
You can't, we can't do that? Okay.
But I'm not 100% sure. I'd have to research that and then come back. I mean, we can.
Can we put on the?
We can postpone this for three weeks, so.
That didn't get us in trouble on our timeline?
It might. I mean, we're past, when do they apply?
Well, they got June 21.
This letter says June 10th on it.
Yeah, June 9th was a.
June 10th, this letter here says.
So we got 60 days?
30. 30 days is shot clock.
Yeah.
So what day?
Yeah, and three weeks would put us over that because I got it over a week ago.
What if we, what if we talk?
Actually received it.
Yeah, I was going to say, can we call a special meeting? We're probably going to have a, we're just going to talk later about having a special meeting probably next week on budget, so we could.
You post a note about like this, you have to do it, it's the day, so you have to figure out when that special meeting is going to be.
And then, then we can just add whatever we want to to that meeting, just as long as we do it this way, right?
Yeah.
Right, okay. All right. So commissioners, what days next week? I know it's coming up 4th of July weekend. Is everybody in town next week?
I am.
Wednesday's not any good, the 30th.
Can we, is everybody available to 29th next Tuesday? They give you enough time to research it?
Yes.
Okay. In the meantime, Brian, you can talk to them and see what we can do about that Lot 1. I would suggest if they, if they'll pull it off Lot 1 and then, then when they get it all straightened out in September, we won't charge them the fee to come back in and do the one lot subdivision. And I think that'd be cleaner for us and them and everybody else, so. And then we'll call a meeting on the 29th.
At 10 o'clock? What time?
That's fine. 10 o'clock on Tuesday and then we'll make up an agenda, Bruce, and we'll try to do the other, we'll try to do the budget at the same time then, so. All right, so on, on number 18, we're going to call a spe, do we need to make a motion on that?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to move action item number 18 to a meeting to be held on June 29th at 10 o'clock in, in this courtroom.
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. 29th, okay. Action item 19, the final plaid of White Cap Ranchettes in Precinct 3.
Okay, this one went through Lake Twalkany Planning Commission and I have a recommendation for approval dated June the 10th, which was their last meeting last week. Other than that, on the final copies that I have to sign, they have addressed the 20 foot easement.
Yes.
That was an issue previously.
So they got it all done, right?
They, they got it done, they addressed it and, and got me the final copy already for six.
All right. Entertained a motion for approval?
Your, your honor, I make a motion, we approve the final plat for White Ranchettes with the 20 foot utility easement and go with what the Twalkany Planning Zoning Advisors do.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 20, the final plaid of Michael's Place in Precinct 4.
This one's okay. It had the 20 foot easement already.
Make a motion to approve the final plat from Michael's Place in Precinct 4.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of accounts payable?
I make a motion, we pay the bill.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of line item transfers?
Make a motion for approval of line item transfers?
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of budget amendments?
Make a motion for approval of budget amendments?
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of payroll personnel?
Make a motion of approval of payroll and personnel?
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Jennifer, did that get us everything? Did we skip anything? We're good? Okay. Entertained a motion to go into an executive session at 11:27.
Under?
Under items. 1 through 4.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Take a quick break, I'll try to turn this thing off. Let's see. Let's see.
We are live.
Okay, we're back in regular session. It's 12:06. Is there anything else before the court today? Not to entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We're adjourned at 12:06. Thank you everyone.